All right, I would like to call to order the September 8th, 2020 meeting, a regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. If you would, please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd just like to read a statement here before we get going. Due to the federal and state emergency declarations in the Minnesota Directive for residents to stay at home, the guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. All right. Molly, if you wouldn't mind doing the roll call, please.
Samurai.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Lewis, here. Superintendent Stenwick.
Here.
All right, thanks Molly. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. The first thing we want to lead off with is a very exciting Highlander highlights. So Truk, if you wouldn't mind turning your camera on. Who else is here? Is, I see, is Mrs. Howe or Riley here? Mr. Burkus? There's Dwayne. Dwayne, if you wouldn't mind.
Ms. Mason.
Oh, Ms. Mason. Ms. Mason, hi. Do we have any other special guests with us? All right. Well, Principal Burkus, would you like to introduce us to your guest tonight?
Yes, I'd be honored to. We are so proud of Don Truk Mai for the work that she did with History Day. And to win a national first-place award is a really big deal. These are events that take place in states all over the U.S. And in this school year, with the social distancing, I believe that the scrutiny that everything got was actually higher because they didn't have all the diversion and other things that come with a live event. So we have had great success with our History Day project, thanks to her coach, who's at least on my screen, sitting right next to her, Ms. Mason, along with her colleagues, Ms. Riley and Ms. Howe, formerly Ms. Student. We've had students go to state every year. Over the last five years, we've had large numbers. We've had years where we've been close to getting a first-place winner, but we've never had what we have today with Don Truk, a national award winner. Not just a national award winner, but a first-place national award winner. So it is an amazing feat, and we're super proud of her. And I know you'd rather hear from her than from me, but I do want to just reiterate that her coaches and Don Truk should be awfully proud, and Mom too, of this amazing feat. So I know at Columbia Academy, we talk about rising up. Don Truk shows what you can do when you put your mind to it. And so congratulations, Don Truk. Congratulations, Ms. Mason, Ms. Riley, and Ms. Student. But we're very, we're just super proud of the work that she did.
Excellent. Truk, we're going to hear from you, but first I want to ask Ms. Mason, your coach, if she has anything she would like to share.
I will just say that History Day requires a huge amount of skills that are not just social studies skills. So it's really an opportunity for our students to show all of their research knowledge and writing skills, making an argument, getting their point across. And Truk really did that exceptionally well. She never gave up. We went through virtual regionals, which was disappointing that we didn't get to attend in person. We did virtual state, and then it was virtual nationals. And she continued to revise and improve her project every step along the way. So we really appreciate her dedication. She's awesome.
All right. Truk, I'm going to read something that I learned, that I've been given to tell people a little bit more about what you did. And then I want to hear from you how it went and what the experience was like for you. So take a minute to think, just so I'm not calling you on the spot there. And I'll read this, and then when I'm done, we'd love to hear from you. But congratulations again. It says, "Truk Mai, student at Columbia Academy, recently competed in the National History Day Contest held virtually due to the COVID-19 pandemic, June 14th to June 20th. She was awarded first place in the website category. The 2020 contest theme was breaking barriers in history, and this year's unprecedented circumstances added an extra layer of meaning to the theme. Truk joined more than half a million students globally who completed a project in one of five categories: documentary, exhibit, paper, performance, or website. Truk created a website project titled 'Oyama vs. California, A Court Case From 1945: Confronting Alien Land Laws.' After completing a project, students compete in a series of contests beginning at the local level. The top student from all 50 states, D.C., U.S. Territories, and international schools are invited to compete in the national contest. More than 300 historians and education professionals served as judges for the students' work and with all other aspects of the contest this year. The judging was conducted remotely online. More than 100 students from across the country awarded cash prizes for superior work in particular categories." That's what we know. So why don't you tell us about your experience?
My experience?
Yeah.
My experience. Some days I was like really into it, like I was gonna like really work hard. And other days, I just like didn't really feel like doing anything. So, but overall, the experience was fun. It was good, it was a good experience.
It's good to hear. Normally, when you win a national award, it's typically a good experience. So that's great. We, if you don't mind, can I ask if the board members have any questions they would like to ask you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions you'd like to ask Truk?
I'd like a comment.
Okay, Lorian.
Truk, I just am really excited for you. I was watching the results nationally, and I emailed Ms. Mason and said, "Did I just read that right?" And then I started to cry, and I started to jump up, and I was so excited for you. I also took the time to look at your project and was just really impressed with the research and the work that you did. Really put a lot of time and effort into that, and it was just, it was impressive. So congratulations. Very, very well-deserved award for you.
Thank you.
Other board members have questions or comments? Molly.
Hi, I just wanted to say congratulations. I have a couple of kiddos of my own that have done the History Day projects, and I know how much work they are. And I cannot even imagine the amount of work that you had to do. So I just wanted to say congratulations. A job well done. Thank you for representing our school so well.
Thank you.
Holla. Go ahead, Holla.
I just want to say congratulations. I know History Day is a huge, huge thing, and to get through it is one thing. But to win where you have, to get to where you have and to actually win, that's amazing. So congratulations, and we're proud of you.
Thank you.
John.
Yeah, I would have to say the same as Molly, having watched my kids work through the competitions at different ages and the amount of work that it was just to be there. You spent obviously a lot of time working with your project and very proud of you for representing the city of Columbia Heights School District. So thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Laura.
What an amazing achievement. You've got to be so incredibly proud that you were able to, to be able to have the dedication and especially to win first place is an astounding achievement. But I really have to ask, what are your plans for the future? What are you looking at doing? Are you going to pursue more in your studies in history? Or what do you have plans for?
I don't really have any plans.
I know it's putting you on the spot there.
What grade are you in?
You can achieve many things.
I'm going to ninth grade this year.
All right. All right, well, I have this award for you that will mail to you. It says, "Truk Mai, Columbia Academy," well, Columbia Academy, right? For last year, "is recognized for placing first in the website category of the National History Day Competition. Thank you for representing the Columbia Heights School District." And so we'll mail this off to you, and we're really proud of you. And thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, and if you want to leave the meeting, you can. You don't have to feel bad if you don't want to sit through this very exciting school board meeting, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, finally, I'd like to thank Ms. Mason and Ms. Student for all their help throughout the two years that I've done History Day. I'm very grateful for them, so thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Congratulations to your whole family.
Bye.
Bye. All right, well, moving on to slightly less exciting things than that. That is pretty fun to watch. We will move on to the approval of the agenda adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. So first, we'll ask for an approval of our agenda. Can I get a motion on that?
So moved.
John?
Second.
Lorian, all right. Any discussion? All right, all those in, oh, Molly, sorry. Roll call votes.
That's okay. A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right. Motion carries. Announcements, description of September 15th, or sorry, description. "September 15th, Tuesday at 5:30, will there be a work, school board work session in the community room and via electronic means. On September 22nd, at 7:00 p.m., there'll be a regular school board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. October 13th, Tuesday, 5:00 p.m., there'll be a regular, or a school board subcommittee meeting on policy via electronic means. On October 13th, Tuesday at 7:00 p.m., there will be a school board meeting, a regular school board meeting here in the community room or via electronic means." All right. Now it's time for the correspondence. Do we have any correspondence, Superintendent?
Chairman, members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. All right, communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The school board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on request presented at this time. Do we have anyone? I haven't seen anyone with blue sheets wandering around. Anybody else? All right. Moving on, the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to do the consent agenda, which includes a personnel report and meeting minutes from a few different meetings. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
I'll give it to Laura.
Second.
All right, Lauren, Lorian. Any discussion? All right, Molly, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move on to reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Let's start with Laura tonight.
I get to go first. Okay, I only have, I guess, three items to report. One is I attended the Policy Subcommittee prior to this meeting, and I also attended the 916 board meeting as well. Of course, it was also electronic. There are two items of note that were a little different than a normal board meeting. One is we did do a preapproval for purchase on Chromebooks because they were selling out more quickly than they could get it to the board to sign the approval. So that's a little unusual, but we've been assured that the prices have been staying very stable. So, and we needed to get the Chromebooks out to the students out there, although a lot of them do have some other means of being able to participate. We just needed to have additional units for if they were attending actual school because they need to have a device in class as well, so we could be equitable. And then the second one was, is we reluctantly, but accepted the resignation of Superintendent Connie Hayes. She will be retiring at the end of this coming up school year. So the next step going forward is working with the other member districts to decide on a process for selecting a new superintendent. Seeing as it is a collaboration, I would love to get some input from administration on what they see as being a very good, as to what we should look at for somebody who can coordinate all the districts and be able to continue the good work and collaboration that we've been doing. So I look, like I said, it's sad to see her go because she's been a cornerstone over there for quite a number of years, and a lot of good things have happened under her leadership. But I do believe that working together, we can continue and, you know, stand on her shoulders and, you know, go forward and even make better things happen. So that concludes my report.
Thanks, Laura. Move on to Holla.
All right, so I attended the Scaling the Heights and talked to some community members, and I believe that's it.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to John.
I also had an opportunity to attend Scaling the Heights and other than a handful of conversations with community members, that's really all I have to report.
All right. Molly.
Thanks, Natty. I just attended some of the back-to-school activities going on around the district and had some conversations with community members. And then just prior to this, attended the Subcommittee on Policy. Thank you.
Thanks. And Lorian.
All right, I also attended the Scaling the Heights, and I attended the high school parent meeting. And I thought that was really well-done, and I just give kudos to the staff there that was able to keep up on the chat questions as well as the live questions. So I thought that was a good meeting to attend. I attended the chair meeting just prior to this and have also had several conversations with community members.
Thanks. For myself, I also attended the Subcommittee Meeting on Policy, the chair meeting prior to this. I was able to take in a tennis match. They can have spectators who are socially distanced, so it's a perfect sport for social distancing. So, you know, the players are inside fences, and all the spectators are outside, and people were being responsible. And so it was good to see the kids out there doing things that they love safely, hopefully. I was able to attend Scaling the Heights and meet our newest teachers. It's very exciting seeing their faces on their first day of school, some of them. There were a few brand-new teachers, which is very exciting. And then I was able to participate sort of in the convocation by being a part of a video. I did get screen captures of myself sent to me that people found my face in various forms of deformity, as you can do on Zoom, which is very funny. So thank you to everyone who captured my face in its very flattering ways. And then I was able to have conversations with community members and Superintendent Stenwick. So, which leads us perfectly to Superintendent Stenwick. Do you have a report for us?
Chair Severson, yes, I do. So today, of course, was the first day of school, and I did have the pleasure of visiting each of the schools today across the district. There were small groups of students on site for various activities, such as orientation, meeting their teacher, material pickup. Some were testing, and there was also childcare. So it really was great to see all of the totes filled up with the learning materials being picked up. But truthfully, it was bittersweet, a bittersweet way to start the school year. We definitely missed that usual energy that the students bring, what a full schools bring. So we did miss that, but students and staff all did a very nice job. Last week was very busy. We were preparing for the start of the school year, which we had the virtual convocation video and professional development for licensed and nonlicensed staff. As Chair Severson mentioned, fall sports are taking place right now with safety precautions in place. So I was able to stop by a girls' soccer game last week. I had conversations with Chair Severson and Member Lewis. Thank you for your time. And then lastly, Governor Walz hosted a town hall meeting last week with the First Lady and Lieutenant Governor as well, with all of the superintendents across the state. And really, it was good to hear their support for schools. And some of the superintendents were able to ask questions and get answers. So it was helpful as well. So that's my report.
All right, thank you so much. We'll move on to our action items. And we'll begin with Director Talkroll telling us about Constitution Week.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenwick. I'm here tonight with an action item for an adoption of our annual resolution to celebrate Constitution Week. This is part of United States Code and a requirement for any school district receiving federal funds. So tonight, the board is being asked to adopt a resolution stating that Columbia Heights Independent School District 13 will celebrate Constitution Week from September 17th through September 23rd. Each year, our schools engage in activities that promote appreciation of the Constitution as the founding document for our democracy. This year, teachers will again build lessons that deepen our students' knowledge and understanding of the content of the Constitution and its protection of our rights as citizens of the United States.
All right, I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'll ask for a motion. It says, "A resolution approving September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a Constitution of the United States, and whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to effectively support, preserve, and defend against all enemies, and whereas September 17th, 2020, marks the 233rd anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition of this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated during Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2020, as designated by proclamation of the United States of America, the President of the United States of America, in accordance with Public Law 915. Now therefore be it resolved that Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13 will hereby celebrate the week of September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week." Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Second, for John. All right. Any discussion on this? All right, let's have a roll call vote.
Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
Motion carries. All right, let's move on to the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. And we'll hear from Director Bennett and Executive Director Niangbo.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenwick, pursuant to Minnesota rule, each school district shall annually submit to the Commission of Education a statement of compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination. This is an annual action item brought to the school board for approval. Once approved, Superintendent Stenwick will submit her electronic signature to the Minnesota Department of Education. And so tonight, we're here seeking approval of this assurance of compliance.
All right, thank you. Could we get a motion to move this one forward?
So moved.
John?
Second.
Laura? All right, discussion. All right, hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the Memorandum of Understanding on Class Schedules, also Director Bennett.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenwick, I presented at the August 25th meeting a memorandum of understanding on class schedules for the 2020-2021 school year. This memorandum of understanding was developed in consultation with local 710 teachers' union, and it's a way to address alternative class schedules that are needed during heights from home or any other type of hybrid learning that we may do. So it would just be for this school year. The teachers' union has signed off on it, so they do agree with it. So tonight, I'm here seeking an approval.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to move this forward?
So moved.
Laura, second?
Second.
Molly?
Molly.
All right, great. Discussion. Laura.
Just a comment. I really want to, I'm very grateful for being able to work together with our local union and being able to get this understanding taken care of prior to school starting. So that just shows what a great community and district and everything that we're enjoying here. So, but thank you very much.
Yeah, agreed, Laura. That's great to remember and thanking all our staff and teachers for their flexibility during this time. Other people have questions or comments? All right, we'll have a roll call vote then.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Severson.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. And that leads us to board topics.
Board comment, if I might.
All right, thanks, John.
Being the first day of school, I mean, I know there's been a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes. And as you, administration, move to work forward to make sure kids have what they need and teachers are able to do what they need to do, there's a lot of stuff going on. I just want to personally thank you guys, all the administration and staff and the teachers, as well as the parents. And hopefully, they're recognizing that this is brand-new for everybody and that the district will accommodate as best as possible, as timely as possible. So I just, I can't even begin to imagine the amount of work in the one step forward, two steps back, or two steps forward, that, you know, having to react to things that maybe weren't anticipated previously. So thank you for all your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agreed, yes, thank you. And thank you, technology, directing my comment to Director Hennigens. I'm sure that's not easy right now. And to everyone else. Laura?
Yeah, actually, I wanted to say much the same thing. And actually, Natty, you said something, actually, at the Policy Subcommittee, which I think is very fitting, building a plane in the air. And it's amazing that you were able to build that plane in the air and keep it in the air at the same time. So I can only imagine how much work has actually gone into this and so much anticipation on what the students were going to need and being able to get that underneath. I can only imagine how many endless hours were spent on that. And I'm very, very grateful. I think you've got a really incredibly good plan going forward. And... and the flexibility to be able to adapt. So very grateful. Thank you.
Lorian.
Yeah, and I want to piggyback on that a little bit. John actually said almost exactly what I was going to say. And I want to just add a piece to, for people who are listening to this a little bit later. There are going to be frustrations along the way. And, you know, I think as well as prepared as we can be, I think we also anticipate that not everything is going to work perfectly on day one. And so just showing each other and ourselves and our students and our parents and our teachers and our staff a little bit of grace and flexibility. And that if you are frustrated or have problems, reach out for help. The technology hotline that's available, principals, the teachers, you know, obviously, board that we're here as well. But don't be frustrated alone. Let those that can help you, help you. And we will get through this, but we're only going to get through it together.
All right, hearing--
Natty?
Oh, go ahead, Molly.
I'm sorry, just real quick. Just as a parent and a school board member and a social worker, I know there's a lot of people in our district working really hard. But I'm friends with a lot of teachers on Facebook. And just seeing the creativity and the energy and the money they're spending and everything to get themselves situated in a place where they can teach effectively, it just, it makes me really happy to be in Columbia Heights because I know we have such dedicated teachers. And just a huge thank you to every teacher for all that they're doing. So thank you.
Yep. And again, on behalf of like all, everyone here, we're very thankful. So hearing nothing else, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 7:32 p.m.